I just thought the council.
All right, I got six blocks shot. Ladies and gentlemen, to bring our meeting to order at this time, Ms. James, would you call the role of the council?
Yes, the Honorable Mayor Pro Tim Alex Heath.
Present.
Honorable Linda J. Davis.
Present.
Honorable Samantha Hudson. The Honorable Hattie Portis Jones.
Present.
Honorable Ulysses J. Smallwood.
Present.
Okay, thank you so much. We'll go to our first agenda item.
First item is Development Impact Fee Study.
Good evening.
Good evening.
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 The item before you is an update or a briefing regarding our Development Impact Fee Study. We are really close to being able to present this item for final adoption, if that's the will of council. But there's some couple of items that we have to button up and get your feedback on. So we wanted to do that during the work session so that you can ask questions, understand kind of where we are, and we can get your feedback on things like fees. Our development team, our Development Impact Fee Committee, has provided us with some great feedback. Our consultant team is here, and they are prepared to provide that briefing to you. They're gonna go into the weeds a little bit, and so if you have questions, things like that, they're available. And they've done this all across the state. So I'll go ahead and turn the mic over to Paige.
Yes ma'am, go ahead. How you doing? Give us your name again.
Paige Hatley.
Okay, yes ma'am, go ahead.
Thank you, and good evening.
Good evening.
Just to make sure I don't screw up, is this ready to go? I can go? Okay, thank you so much. Denise teed it up, and I just, as mentioned, have a brief overview of where we are. And that includes next steps, and some of those next steps include some hopeful engagement this evening. This will not be the only opportunity to discuss the fees themselves, because now we're beginning to get into talking about the impact fees that could be charged if council ultimately wants to move forward with adopting an impact fee program. There will be additional opportunities, of course, with public hearings for council discussion, but we were hoping to initiate some of that tonight. So first, just to bring us all up to speed as to where we are, you may be aware, as a reminder, that already there was a Capital Improvements Element, or CIE, document that went to the state for review. It is the document required of all communities who wish to collect development impact fees. And it is what identifies in terms of capital project needs over the coming decades. So for the city, that's looking at project needs specific to parks and recreation, police and fire. And relative to projected housing, employment, and population growth, the CIE has identified, also in concert with plans that the city has desired to implement in the coming years, identifies a series of projects that are eligible for impact fee funding. And I think Denise, you said that DCA has already come back quickly and has indicated that they have approved the CIE, but technically, it's still in an open review period where there's an opportunity for other communities to provide comment. But that was a very quick turnaround, so that's great to know. So that's one piece. Ultimately, to move forward, the CIE would have to be adopted as part of the process of initiating an impact fee. So that step is done as far as the procedures associated with it. As I mentioned, it doesn't address the fees at all. It's project-based. The state doesn't review fees and what could be charged. But where we fall into, well, where does that reside? The fee schedule would ultimately be part of a Development Impact Fee Ordinance. So we have the CIE, which is project-based, and you have your ordinance that provides details on administering an impact fee program. And it would be the home for a two-page fee schedule with a variety of land uses indicating what the impact fees could be. That would be assessed at the time of a building permits being issued for new development. So CIE and ordinance together are needed to implement an impact fee program. Also, part of the ordinance is important to note, you all appointed an advisory committee many, many months ago, which is required by state law. The appointed committee has to meet and provide input on the ordinance, which is primarily means the fee schedule, before it can be considered for adoption. So we've had two of three meetings so far, and we've touched on what you see here. We just have provided an overview as to what constitutes the content of the ordinance. I've got highlighted the fee schedule, because really, that's what we're gonna talk about fees this evening, as well as the provisions in the ordinance that speak to ways to reduce fees on a case-by-case basis, regardless of what the adopted fee schedule is. Ultimately, the ordinance, if adopted, will have to have an effective date. So when the city will be in the business of collecting impact fees, when would that be? And everything related to the ordinance all harks back to supporting the provisions of the Development Impact Fee Act, or DIFA. So some key points, I gotta switch, because my glasses are weak. So key points about the fee schedule, which is, would ultimately be part of the ordinance. Just some basic 101s. Impact fees are calculated on a per-unit basis. So there would be an impact fee per dwelling unit. And then for most non-residential uses, there would be a fee per square foot. So restaurants, shops, churches, hospitals, private schools, everything largely would be based on a per-square-foot fee. That would be applied to, of course, the size of the development, and that would generate the total impact fee that would be owed. They are assessed when a building permit is pulled. So again, you come in, if there's a 50-lot subdivision, building permits are issued for that, then 50 homes times the per-unit fee would generate what the total impact fee would be for that new subdivision. And I believe we touched on this last time. Any fees collected have to tie back to and be spent on projects that will be part of the adopted CIE. That's the master document. DCA has approved, and council would have to adopt that. Once it's in effect, those are the projects that fees can be spent on. So there's a direct correlation between fees coming in for parks, police, and fire can only be spent on those identified projects. Now, we're starting to get, we're gonna start getting a little bit more into the weeds. We're gonna be talking about, city council can adopt up to the maximum fees that could be charged to help pay for the projects in the CIE document. Now, there is a variety of projects, from fire station expansions to extensive park projects to help implement the recent Parks and Recreation Master Plan. The maximum that is established relates to the Development Impact Fee Act that tells us that we can't charge new development more than their fair share of the costs of the projects that are needed to serve them. And so we undertake a series of calculations to say, okay, here's what all of these projects are gonna cost over the coming decades to serve new growth, expanded park system, expanded police and fire. And what could the most be that the city can charge to help pay for those projects? And then we end up, in essence, dividing that up by the expected increase in housing units and population and jobs over the next two decades. So what that begins to look like, if we could put it into practice with some examples, is this little table here. Now, this is the maximum fee for a detached, single-family charge, or house that could be charged based on, it's all math. This isn't anyone saying, this is what I think the fee should be. It's based on project costs, projected growth, how that's divvied up, and ultimately, that is the ceiling. Now, we start with a home, because that resonates. People can see, okay, what would it be for a new house coming online? And then, well, what are other people charging? To kind of get an understanding of the region, what other fees look like. So we polled in communities nearest that have impact fees. And so you can see sort of a range between the 2000s up to Peachtree City, over 4,200. The Fairburn max, that's getting into, again, it's just math. The way the math has worked out, the only communities who have adopted fees at that level, you're getting into the North Fulton Cities, so Alpharetta, Sandy Springs. Forsyth County recently adopted a fee of 7,000. That 6,700 is getting in the higher handful in the state. But again, that's how the numbers have shaken out. When we do this with communities, you'll find comparable numbers saying, hey, this is what it takes ultimately to help pay for these projects. But then we get into the discussion, well, just because the max is here, what are we actually comfortable adopting? What is practical for this particular community? And sometimes it works out to be that, generally, it seems that oftentimes 1% of a new house cost is about what you find, what the impact fee for a single-family home sometimes is. And so, again, this is just showing, trying to start a little bit of comparison of apples to apples. Looking at a house, what are some other fees in the area? And then how is that broken out? So you'll see that there's a large 4,200, every impact fee coming in for a house, based at this maximum, the majority of that would go to parks and recreation. That's common, because parks and recreation systems have very hefty price tags, and we find that in most communities, that the parks fee is often the highest. Public safety, again, we've got police and fire combined. And to expand that system, it would be just about 2,500 of fees collecting would be going to public safety. The other communities that collect for public safety, that typically is police, fire, it could be E-911, EMA, but we collapse it under that single umbrella. The city is not proposing to collect fees for roads, and libraries are not shown, because that's typically a county function, and county impact fee programs collect for those. You can see also when the fees were adopted. So they're sort of a little bit all over the place. It just, it depends on the rate of growth in these communities as to what the needs are that are demanded in terms of expanded services. It depends on the costs of those projects. So a lot of factors are brought to bear. I wanted to show also a few other scenarios that were not residential. And just doing a little bit of back-of-envelope calculations, looking at these same communities. And if someone were to look at a small grocery store, sort of the size of a Trader Joe's, a fast-food restaurant, sort of the typical Chick-fil-A size, a sit-down restaurant comparable in size, but one that wasn't fast food, and then a warehouse about 100,000 square feet. I took all of those sizes and implied them to those communities' per-unit fees, as well as the city's per-unit fee. Just to give you an idea of where the commercial fees, or the commercial uses, what they would generate relative to other communities. And again, it's kind of all over the place. But I wanted to show also that if there is a desire to come down from the 6,700 per dwelling unit fee, what communities often do is, they start with that and say, you know, we're comfortable with X number for a house. Now, what do we need to do to get our maximum down to that? Well, that means we need to, we can reduce our public facility categories. Your public facility categories are parks and then public safety. So if you were to reduce the parks category to help get down to a lower number, that's less than the 6,700, then that would affect dwellings. That would affect residences, because they're the users of the parks system. And so they are the ones that pay the parks fee and public safety. If you were to reduce the, and/or both, you could reduce parks, you could reduce public safety, reducing the public safety category from that 2,500 max, that would reduce fees for businesses as well, because they're paying into that. They don't pay the parks fee, but they pay the public safety fee. So, again, there's different ways that you could arrive at the math. But oftentimes, it's helpful to look at the house fee, what's the target? And then from there, we'll reduce our categories, such as parks and public safety, so that combined, they reach that lower fee. And then there's a trickle-down effect, because all those two pages of land uses that fall under each of those categories would be reduced in kind. So if you reduce public safety by 20%, all the land uses would be affected. So all of those commercial uses, for example, everything would be reduced by the same percentage. Now, this was recently shared with the advisory committee. And we went through these same sort of sample uses, what are the categories, what's the maximum fee? And to date, because we had a recent meeting, and we're gonna have to have a third and final, we're trying to schedule immediately for next week, is they discussed looking at between 2,500 and 2,800 per house. So that as a range, it would, the range wouldn't exist. It would be a number between there, which is comparable. It's not the lowest necessarily, but it's not the highest in the area in those sample fees that were shared for five or six other communities. But based on house prices in the area, based on building costs, based on what's currently being charged in the area, it was recommended that, let's look between 2,500 and 2,800. So that was the first recommendation. We're gonna discuss, though, further next week to solidify their recommendations and then come back to you to share those final recommendations. Their second discussion point was looking at when the fees are collected. Currently, state law says you can't collect impact fees no sooner than when a building permit is issued. Oftentimes, when someone comes in to pull a building permit, the fee is assessed at that time. The impact fee is assessed, this is what you're gonna pay. And it's often paid at that same time. The advisory committee talked about perhaps some flexibility, which does happen in some communities. It would be achieved by the Development Impact Fee Ordinance language that says you can't pay the impact fee sooner than the building permit and no, but no later than a certificate of occupancy, which would be, of course, at the end of the process. So we're gonna hash out the fees and some of their concerns about when payment could be made, if there's flexibility. We're gonna hash that out again next week. But I just wanted to give you all a heads-up that that was sort of the tone and sort of consensus and the types of topics that they came up with. Okay, last slide then, and then I will stop. As mentioned, there will be a third and final advisory committee meeting when we wrap up their comments, so that we're complying with state law, that their final thoughts get routed to you before commencing the public hearing process to consider the Development Impact Fee Ordinance and a potential fee schedule. There have to be two hearings, at least two weeks apart. And we are striving to get those moving forward so that you all can consider them in this calendar year, November and December's meetings. We'll prepare the CIE for adoption. We understand if it's been approved by DCA, we just need to change the date on the cover and make sure that would be ready for your consideration to adopt, which would be done at the same time as the ordinance. You could adopt the ordinance as soon as after the second public hearing closes. Again, state law, there have to be two public hearings on the ordinance/fee schedule. And so the soonest, potentially, that council could have an impact fee program, the mechanics in place with an ordinance in the CIE, would be early December. But then, it would be, we would have to have an effective date, though. That would be sometime in 2026, when fees could actually be collected. There would have to be, you know, the internal workings with staff to make sure that everything was up and running, and they were in a position to begin collecting. So that's where we are as far as trying to quickly move forward so that you have something to consider and finalize either way. So part of, again, at each hearing, there's plenty of opportunity for council to discuss fees. Oftentimes, we get into a lot of detail after the public hearings. Changes are made to the fee schedule. Modifications can be made between the first and second hearing. But because we had the opportunity for this work session, it was hopeful that perhaps we could get sort of a gut reaction on this idea of looking at the house fee as a starting point. And that high number compared to what other people are charging, what you think is suitable for the city, and the preliminary recommendations coming in from the advisory committee that suggest something lower. So that, I'd love to get any feedback there, but of course, that's, happy to take any questions and go from here.
Members of council, Ms. Jones, Ms. Davis, and what, Mr. Smokey, Mr. Heath, or Mrs. Suss?
I have one question.
Go ahead, I'll start actually with Ms. Jones at the end, and then Ms. Davis at the end, I'll come to you. Go ahead.
Thank you so much, Paige, for the presentation. A few questions. I want to make sure that everyone understands that these fees are for new construction only. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, sorry. My pause is only because if there is a doubling in size of an office complex, for example, then that is creating additional demand on services. So you would have instances where there would be expansion projects that are subject to impact fees, but most simply, yes, new development in whatever form that takes would be subjected to a fee.
Okay. And then, it is not allowed to retroactive?
Correct.
Okay. What is the closure date for other, for comments from other stakeholders, outside stakeholders?
Any comments that DCA has mentioned, that just pertains to the CIE. It has, that's just the projects, that has nothing to do with the fees themselves. And typically, that's just a, I don't know what they said, maybe a couple of weeks. Typically, that's routine, and I've never seen anyone weigh in on another community's capital improvement element. But we're not at the point where there's any, of course, opportunity to provide comment at the public hearings specific to the fees themselves.
Right, but that would be, I would consider them to be internal or citizen stakeholders, residents and/or businesses. But in terms of requirements from other governmental entities, maybe that's the best way to put it. Other than DCA, are there any other governmental entities that must review it?
I think they do a blanket invitation to all communities that are in the area, all other governments, that say, hey, there's a CIE that's posted and available for review for reviewing your neighboring jurisdiction. And so it's generally to other local governments in the area.
Okay. So, and what is that closure date?
They typically have upwards of a two-month process from when they initiate review, but the DCA has finished their internal review and has authorized, I'm sorry? The 6th?
November 6th.
Okay. Okay, so we're right up on it. Okay, great. Thank you. Time for this.
Thank you. Um, and then relative to the fees, are, um, if we establish those fees, are modifications allowed? For instance, um, can we accommodate increased inflation, for example? Or are we locked in to the fees for a certain period of time?
So, great questions. Uh, one, the fees do take into account, um, inflation to an extent as far as trying to understand when they may be implemented, um, and calculated and, uh, the present value so that we're mindful of the future implementation date and what needs to be brought in that, that, uh, sitting in the impact fee count and generating interest. What is the number so that when it's actually implemented, there's sufficient funds? So we do take that into account with engineering news records, um, building construction index, construction cost index, so that's factors into our calculations. Um, but as far as, you know, the fees, one, if you were to adopt a lower fee, you could increase the fee as long as you are within that, you still say, under the ceiling. But certainly if there is something that, um, changes wildly in terms of building costs and they want to revisit the fees and how they've been calculated, that can happen at any time. Um, so you're, you're not locked in there, but you're, you're locked into a process though. So it's not just willy-nilly.
Yes.
Because there's a certain expectation with the calculations, um, that, uh, yes, we understand things can change, but we've tried to account for that based on past trends, um, and increases in building costs over the past several years.
Okay. And then my last question is, um, you're saying that the, the advisory committee is recommending anywhere from twenty-five-hundred to twenty-eight-hundred, um, and on residential. Is that correct?
Yes, because that's, and that's where the discussion is going, that whether we'll shore up next week. Um, and so the idea being that once we get a handle on that number, we can then roll back the categories, the parks and public safety categories to get to that number. And then that would have the trickle, trickle-down effect as far as reducing all fees, um, underneath.
So is commercial included then in that discussion?
Commercial, um, so that's a great point. We haven't gotten to that nuanced, important part yet. That would be the next stage, next week, to say, okay, what's, what's, is there a magic number? Well, then what do you recommend? How do we get there? To what extent do we reduce the parks category? To what extent do we look at reducing, uh, public safety? So, great question. That's sort of the, the, the part two that we wanna delve into and, uh, shore up with them at our next final meeting.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, can we put that first slide back up again? Um, in reference to impact fees our neighbors charge? And we are pretty high above their numbers? Possible to put the slide?
Yeah, I would say I'm, I'm technically not savvy, so I'm just waiting for the prose.
Yeah, so I, I want everybody to see that, because my question's gonna be relative to that. Um, and first for clarity, the impact fees are paid by the developers, right?
Yes, I mean, sure, but ultimately, you know, it, it's, it's passed down ultimately. Um, it's the cost of their doing business, but then that's factored in, uh, to their development costs. Um, and so it's not necessarily that they may bear that one-hundred percent. Um, so looking at this, the, a new house for sale, um, they're not going to eat that. That'll be part of their bigger picture, their package, as they're putting, um, houses on the market and what that sale price needs to be.
Okay. So I, I also wanna know how did we Fairburn get to six thousand seven sixty-three when, you know, everybody else is much lower than that? And there, I know you were talking, there are a lot of variables to coming up to that.
So one, um, Griffin, I believe, uh, those, that was part of Spalding County's impact fee program. And the fee was probably three times as high as what you see, again, as part of the exercise of establishing the maximum. And, uh, a fee at a much lower rate was adopted. That's very common. You'll find, um, other, uh, communities, even rural areas where the maximum fee is seven thousand, eight thousand dollars. I mean, you're looking at establishing, what does it cost to expand your services? Um, and even sometimes when projected growth isn't necessarily robust, if there are certain price tags for a needed jail expansion, for example, and you only have so many projected housing units and increase, you're having to divide that by a finite number, because that's what it tells us our, our projections are. So sometimes there's fewer people to help, uh, spread those costs. Other times the costs such as a jail are just incredibly, incredibly high. Um, and, you know, that gets into issues, uh, with a bond issue perhaps as being, uh, the preferred course of action. But sometimes the price tags, um, especially with parks programs, and if there's a robust, uh, fire expansion plan, uh, people are trying to address their ISO ratings and, and, and contend with future growth to accommodate it, um, it, it, it can add up. But they often don't adopt that maximum. Alpharetta, Sandy Springs, Milton adopted their maximums. Those are all over six thousand. That was established as the maximum. I don't know of anyone that has, they may have had that ceiling established. But by and large, they've been falling in Clayton County, for example. Um, uh, well, no, that's not the, they're recent, but their ceiling was lower. Um, Liberty County isn't in the area. That's on the coast. Similarly, they came in at over seven thousand or about and they ended up adopting a fee at twenty-five-hundred. And so you find by and large sort of that two to three to low fours sort of being the cap. Even though they could go up here, most communities come down lower. So, and forgive me for not directly answering there. So when you peel back the layers, it just depends on how many categories, um, that are part of the, how many categories make up public safety, um, how expensive the projects were, how extensive their growth was, that dictates more projects to accommodate. So there's a lot of factors, but most people, um, come in at lower. They adopt lower than the maximums. So you're not seeing all of the maximums. You're seeing what was adopted.
What was adopted, okay. That, that clears that up. But is the reason for doing that is, uh, in reference to that cost being ultimately gonna be given to the person that purchased the, the home?
Well, sure, that factors into it and that's why we have, um, representatives from the development community and that's mandated by state law, that the advisory committee has to have at least fifty percent of folks from the real estate development, um, world, uh, who, who's doing business? Who knows the cost of doing business? And who would be in the position to be paying the fees regardless of whether they're passed on or not? And so, um, that was what much of the, the, the tenor of the conversation that we had with folks today is saying, you know, just looking at, um, understanding that impact fees, um, they're not a bad idea. But what we think is fair is coming in here, um, at least at this point in time for Fairburn.
Okay. Um, my other question is, um, noted that the advisory committee, um, was going to have that fee paid with preference would be a certificate of occupancy as opposed to permit. Why is that?
We're, we need to talk about that a little bit more, um, because there already is an allowance in the ordinance, um, that inserts the certificate of occupancy as being an opportunity to pay the fee. If you don't know, for example, uh, what the ultimate use is, if it's a shell building and you don't know exactly what the use is in order to generate a fee, um, then you can assess a fee, they can pay what they think it is. And then before a CO is issued, if the final, uh, use at that point is determined and the fee is actually more than what they paid at the initial assessment, then they have to come in before the CO is issued, uh, to pay that difference. So, um, I, most communities, they don't necessarily say, well, you, you can do either or. If you want to pay a building permit or, or later with the CO, um, it's, it gives just a little bit of flexibility when there are some odd scenarios that may warrant that. Uh, but we need to hash that out a little bit more next week. But Denise, I don't know if there's anything in terms of, because you live and breathe with the development and the stage of things with the CO.
Um, I think probably why the development community, uh, mentioned that, two reasons. One, um, because no one knows the exact date of adoption. So to plan for their financing and things like that, that may be to their benefit. The other item is that we do have quite a few mixed-use developments that will have, just as Paige described, uh, buildings where we know there might be a potential tenant, but they are still advertising and doing leasing. So you may have the building that's there, but no one occupying it. And in those instances, it does make sense to hold off until the CO.
Okay, so this was, uh, developers' sort of decision?
Well, recommendation.
A recommendation, uh, to do that. How are we weighing their recommendation as it relates to what's best for the city of Fairburn?
I think it's always best to focus on, um, how to kind of maximize this revenue opportunity, um, for the benefit of the residents. Um, we can look at how many residential developments that we have on pending because we do have a lot of things that will be impacted by this. We have a lot of developments that have not gotten final plaits or building permits of any kind. And it very well might be next year before they are impacted. And it may be, um, quite a few years before they actually come out of the ground and start submitting for building permits, because some places get their land disturbance without getting their building permits. So we can provide that information as a part of the public hearing so you can kinda see where most of our developments are in the stage and kinda make a decision from there.
Okay. Um, well, the one last question I want to know, um, will the notifications of the impact fees that we have when everything is setting down, will they be through the public hearing or some?
We have a list of, of contractors that are building in the city so that as a part of that process, we can let everyone know that, um, this is, you know, what we're doing and here. And that's typically what happens. Um, most of the development community, because we're a little bit smaller than some cities, they all know that we're working on an impact fee study. Um, surprisingly, most of the developers who came to the table were asking what our fees were. Um, and we were like, we're working on it. So, um, it's not a surprise at all. I think they were kind of expecting it and just are just kinda waiting on what that final number is so they can make sure that they're budgeting, um, the allocated resources so they can move forward with their project while also accounting for the new revenue for the city.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, um, I'm glad that, um, you talked about the impact fees and the max. So am I understanding, you can help me because you're the expert with this. Is this the max in which we can go? And we need to come back to the table and decide for parks and recs and public safety, if those are the numbers that we're gonna go with?
Yeah, well stated. That, that's really what we're getting at is that's for, uh, it, it's just easiest to frame the discussion to start with around what's a single-family house cost. And so we, we got some direction from the advisory committee. And I, and obviously this is in your court, but I'm just wanting to reinforce the fact that that is a key part of the state law to make sure that we share with you their input. That, that's all it is, is their input or advice. Um, and so we were, um, at our next meeting, going to then put that back to them about how would you see making reductions to the different categories to get to whatever the magic number is that would be recommended to council? So then we were gonna come back and say, what do you all think? But at the same time, um, you know, happy to, to begin to discuss that with you this evening as time allows, um, specific to those two categories, because we just have the two. We've got parks over four thousand, we've got public safety over two thousand. And then what do we want to get to as a total number that we would need to reduce those by? But yes, what you said is what you're, what we're doing.
Okay, thank you. And also in consideration with these fees, I always think about, you talked about fairness, equity and fairness. Uh, so are any exemptions or credits being offered? Or if would be considered for affordable housing, senior facilities or redevelopment zones? And what's the estimated fiscal impact that those exemptions could possibly have?
Great question. And I forgot a slide. There's an important slide about exemptions. Now, this is kind of an odd thing that, that again, comes down from state law. What it says is, um, jurisdictions can adopt exemptions for affordable housing or developments that create extraordinary economic development or employment growth. It's up to you all to define what that means. And so in order to consider someone coming forward and saying, I have an afford, I have a development that's going to create affordable housing. And if that is a supported policy that, um, the, the city, um, supports, uh, then we have to identify, well, what does that mean? What would be the criteria for review, um, so that you all can make a determination as to whether an impact fee would be waived partially or one-hundred percent? The kicker is, uh, the law says that whatever you exempt for affordable housing or extraordinary economic development, however you define it, has to be made up by the local government. So whatever's not being received in terms of impact fees by the private entity has to be made up by the public entity. Uh, the idea being that it, I guess it's serving a public purpose. And so, um, that's why you only see three communities in the state, Savannah, Atlanta, and Sandy Springs actually, who have affordable housing exemptions and they have detailed criteria. Um, so it's definitely something that can be, um, looked at, but there's that kicker. You, you gotta find the money to go into the impact fee fund that you're not collecting for that. There are though, um, in terms of credit situations, uh, if there is a project and there is a, um, or, or prospective development, um, and, and, uh, overture is made to, uh, help put in part of a trail that's identified in the CIE or to donate right away or make some kind of contribution, um, from that developer for a, towards a project that's in the CIE, then they can of course get credit for that. That is, is for a parks or police or fire project. Um, so private development agreements, you know, I, I'm, I'm assuming those, um, are utilized or have been over time. That's still a tool that doesn't go away with the impact fees. Um, but as far as exemptions, that, that's something that most people tread a little bit more lightly because of the reason I made, I said about having to recoup what you don't take in.
Understood. Um, and just a few more questions, because it, because what we have now is we're starting. We, we're putting something in place. And what that means is, you may not be able to answer all of these questions because the onus is on us to make sure that we have policies in place to implement. You got good plans, but how we implement it matters. So I, I considered like, how will the city prevent disproportionate burden on residential developers versus commercial projects? There has to be some balance of equity there. We talk about the fund, what oversight mechanisms will ensure collective fees are spent within a statutory six-year period, uh, or refund or i- if unused. So it sounds like we're starting with this, we're putting the fees in place. But is it, um, a workable idea to make sure that the policies and how we implement is a part of this resolution? Or is that something separate and apart that we need to do at a later date?
So, um, implementation and accountability and transparency and sort of what happens after you approve things, um, that also is, there's a framework for that under the state law. And every year, um, it's required that the city submit what's called an annual CIE update. You're not changing the projects in the CIE, but you're telling the state, okay, in the next five years, the CIE gives us this long list over twenty years, but in the near term, we think these are the projects that this, that we're gonna start implementing um, based on, uh, what's available in terms of budget and, uh, policy direction. These are our priorities. And with that, as a financial- And with that is a financial report that tells the state what's been collected in terms of impact fees, what's been spent, what's encumbered, so what is intended to then be associated with certain projects in the CIE. I mean, it has line items for any refunds, for credits, and so it's a manageable process. I've never known any community have to hire additional finance staff or hire additional planning and zoning staff, but there is that thread that carries through as far as process and accountability, and having the, the state look at the records of how the program is being administered.
Finally, as we move forward with approval, I, I would like, or an opportunity for this council to have a little bit more insight on scenarios, reviewing the impact fee scenarios, because you know, anything, when there's a framework, then we have to put it in scenario base to see what scenarios will yield the greatest impact for Fairburn. So, thank you. The, the framework that you talked about, is that something that you can send to us? Or is there a website that I can go pull up and look at the state framework that's been established for this?
Oh, oh, well, that is, that's in terms of sort of the record-keeping.
Right.
Yes, that, there is, now, you'll be getting that information if you adopt a program. We'll have a procedures manual where we kind of do a cheat sheet, that certainly can provide the basics as to what the state is, expects to see, that city staff has to keep up with each year. It's, it's pretty straightforward, but certainly can send that on.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
And the, I'm sorry, Mr. Heath, and then I'll go ahead, you, you should go ahead.
I just have one question. Say something catastrophic took place, like a hurricane, flood, facility burned down. Would there be an additional fee charged for, to get another permit, so to speak?
No, there are, I know I was talking about exemptions in terms of affordable housing, but there are exemptions in terms of what is not subject to an impact fee. And so that would be a type of scenario where you have something, something catastrophic happens, you're replacing something, there, there's no fee with that.
Just a one-time fee.
That, that's right, that's right.
Thank you, that's all I need.
And actually, my, my question, you, you may have answered part of it, kind of along the line of what Ms. Huss asks, as related, dealing with exemptions. And my question would be, as related on the Atlanta Housing Authority in particular, they deal with Section 3? And so I guess my question would be, as relates to exemption, are you, are you familiar, are you familiar with exemptions specifically that deal with Section 3 housing?
That would be, I'm familiar with housing authorities having a large role in terms of exemptions, and most recently Savannah's housing authority, because I worked with Savannah, I haven't worked with Atlanta.
Okay.
But they have, they, they actually are the ones that sort of spearhead and affordable housing exemptions in that process and review.
Okay.
Where funds are going to come from. So there are models, and that may be Savannah, and perhaps Atlanta as well, specific to your, the Section 3, but I, I admittedly don't know the details, other than I know there are housing authorities that are actively working with this in the few cases in the state.
Okay, you're saying, you're, I'm just trying to make, you're saying Atlanta Housing Authority is, I know Savannah is kind of the model, that's based on the information I had looked at, but you're saying Atlanta Housing is actually looking at Savannah as a role model, if I can use the lack of a better word?
Well, I, I'm sorry, I, I'm speaking to the fact that the housing authority in Savannah is, they're the ones that helped craft the criteria for review for the city council to be able to review proposals for affordable housing. And they've got all sorts of thresholds and what constitutes affordable housing, and how they ensure that that, that facet is running appropriately. I'm just assuming that Atlanta Housing Authority perhaps does the same for their exemption. So I apologize, I think I'm missing it a little bit, other than knowing if housing authorities play a big role where they exist, and there's a desire to address affordable housing exemptions.
And then, I mean, I think I know the answer, but I, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't ask, as it relates to, you talked about the municipalities, I guess that, the question where you said that the fellows would have to eat or be exempt? I guess I'm trying to make sure, I think I know the answer, the answer is be, they're not going to eat it, I mean, for the most part.
Right, again, whatever, you know, permits, if they're filing for all the permits to build what comes out of the ground, well, this is one more cost, and so it's obviously going to be a pass-through. So, one way or the other, they account for that as far as their pro forma and how to address impact fees. But ultimately, sure, it's, it's for homes, that has an implication then on what the sale price is going to be.
Yes, ma'am. Any other members got a question of council? If, if not, thank you so much, ma'am.
Thank you for your patience and great questions. Thank you.
Members of council, I've got 10 minutes till the hour, we'll start in 10 minutes from now. Members of the public that's come in, could you please turn your cell phones to the silent position? I'm appreciating we'll start properly in 10 minutes.